Welcome back. We are going to address our second item on the agenda, a study session. Our 2022 to 2023 budget update, 2023 to 2024 operating budget, 2023 to 2028 capital improvement plan preview. And we have a presentation from our finance director, Rich Lee.
Good evening, Mayor Lee and members of the council. Rich Lee has served as the city's finance director. I'll first start off with an update on the current fiscal year. The last time I was before the council, it was February. That was the first major update, and a few things have changed since that time. When I was here before the council in February, we were effectively at a breakeven proposition with the additional budget preparation for the 2% TOT fund, which was $2.4 million. Since that time, we've had a few updates to two of our major revenue sources. The first is our favorite topic, the property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees, or otherwise known as VLF. What has happened since that time is that there are two school districts that are non-basic aid that are very close to shifting to basic aid status. Just a few refreshers on some key concepts with VLF. The first is Prop 98. This comes back to the late 80s, I believe, that established a minimum funding requirement Their school districts, from a financial perspective, fall into one of two categories. If they're able to meet that Prop 98 limit through their own property taxes, then they're considered basic aid. If they are not able to meet that with their funding sources, then they're considered non-basic aid. When VLF came around in 2004, one of the key areas was VLF that's owed to the cities and to the county can only be funded by property tax and Educational Revenue Augmentation Fund, ERAF, from non-basic aid school districts. In San Mateo County, 15 of the 23 are basic aid. So there's really a dearth of non-basic aid school districts to backfill that VLF that's owed to the county and to the cities. So when I came from the council in February, the Ravenswood School District, as an example, was $200,000 away from that Prop 98 limit. And the latest estimate is they are now $45,000 away from that limit. The graph on the right shows what's going to happen to the countywide VLF shortfall one and if Ravenswood shifts to basic aid status. It's going to add $28 million to the countywide shortfall. Likewise, for San Carlos School District, they're $100,000 away from the limit. And when they shift to basic aid, that will add $30 million. So we were at $11.8 million. When and if these school districts shift to basic aid status, that will bring the countywide shortfall to $70 million. The other part is that the city's share of VLF countywide is about 6%. So with the countywide shortfall increasing to $70 million, that's going to increase our share of the shortfall to over $4 million. When you look at that with respect to the budget, that's about $3.4 million less than what we had budgeted. The other major revenue source that is no surprise is the real property transfer tax. This shows the past five years of history, quarter by quarter. Each quarter that's shown is actual revenue that we have received, with the exception of the fourth quarter for the current fiscal year. That is a projection based on the trend that we've been seeing over the last four or five months. On average, it's about 43% of what the average of what we had received in fiscal year 21 and 22. So we started off the year at $11.1 million assumed for the current year budget. When I came before the council in February, because of the trends that we were seeing, we reduced that down to nine. And now, because we have, one, a couple of months of receipts to account for, but, two, because of the trends that we're seeing, we're decreasing that estimate down to $6.3 million. So on the left column, because of these changes in revenue assumptions, instead of a break even year, we're looking at a loss of about $7 million. Right below that is what we started the fiscal year with in terms of fund balance or reserves. The city is in a very good position to be able to absorb losses like this. We have well over $100 million in reserves. Notably, we have the rainy day reserve. That's what is above and beyond our 25% operating reserve and our housing set aside. Now, I'm going to pause right there to see if there's any questions from council on the updated mid-year budget for the current fiscal year. So in the middle column is the projection for next fiscal year. And we are looking at an $11.5 million loss for the general fund. Now, know that that includes the general fund front-loading support, an additional $3 million of support for the capital improvement plan. And that also does assume that we're going to continue to face ongoing VLF shortfalls. Now, if we were to actually receive what we're owed from the state for VLF, that loss would be closer to about $7 or $8 million. So it's a pretty big swing. But again, likely starting off next fiscal year with over $100 million in reserves, we're able to absorb that. And you'll see in about 10 minutes, that is the punchline with the long-term plan. The graph before you shows all of the city's major tax revenues. Obviously, property tax is still our number one revenue source. Property tax, sales tax, real property transfer tax, TOT. General fund tax revenues, that represents 80% of our total general fund revenues. If you were to look at property tax, that's the bottom part in orange. It looks fairly flat. But again, we are expecting assessed value growth of at least 4%. But because of the VLF shortfall, that's offsetting the growth that we're having in assessed value. Sales tax, again, we recovered back from the pandemic-driven recession in two years. That was two and a half times faster than it took us to recover from the Great Recession. TOT is recovering faster than what we had expected, based on projections from travel California and specifically for business travel, which is the primary base for San Mateo's TOT. It's expected that business travel will recover back to the 2019 baseline by 2026. That's why for next fiscal year, we're anticipating this ongoing recovery. For real property transfer tax, yes, for the current fiscal year, $6.3 million. However, with the federal open market committee's projection of that federal funds rate, which has a direct nexus to how much it costs to borrow money, especially for mortgages, that's going to get down to, you know, that 2.5%, 3% range by 2026 or 2027. So what you'll see in the long-term plan is an assumption of $8 million on average for real property transfer tax. On the expenditure side, yes, please.
Through the mayor, thank you. Just before I forget. Rich, you mentioned that at this time, we're projecting a greater VLF shortfall, but there is an opportunity potentially to get made whole from the state. If that were to occur, would the funds be brought directly back to the general fund? Or how would it work?
Thank you for the question. So at present, the process is, and I'll use the current fiscal year as an example. So let's say that the shortfall is $70 million countywide. We get to the end of the fiscal year in June. In August, the county, on our behalf, as well as all the other cities in San Mateo County, files a claim with the state, and I use that word specifically and intently, a claim for the state to consider as a part of the subsequent year fiscal year budget. And for the loss that we had for 2022, which was about $33 million countywide, our share of that was $1.9 million. And in the governor's budget that was released in January, there is no money appropriated to make San Mateo County whole. We are awaiting to see what happens with the May revise. You may recall that we sent a letter signed by the mayor to our state representatives to try to do everything in their power to try to make this come to fruition for San Mateo County. This, in the past, they have made appropriations for the shortfall. But next year, at the last time I looked, they were looking at a $25 billion budget shortfall. So it's no surprise that this was one of the first things that they said no to. But it's a two-year gap. So let's say that the May revise does include the appropriation for the shortfall that we had from last year. That's 2022. The budget that they're looking at right now is for 2324. So from the time that we were actually owed the money to the time that we may potentially get it, it's a two-year gap.
And if I could, through the mayor, am I correct that San Mateo County is the only county that's dealing with this particular issue, which doesn't help us much?
You're spot on. We are the only county in this situation. Napa County is projecting that in the future, the near future, they will be. But for the past four or five years, we are on an island. And that does not help our case with the state. Thank you for the question. I'm going to move on to general fund expenditures. So 2024 is year two of the two-year business cycle. Year one, we focus on the operating budget. And much of what you'll see this evening is a focus on the CIP because 2024 is year two, which we do focus on the CIP. So we get more detail in the budget document, project charters, which provides a narrative for what improvements that is provided by each funded project. And for next year, as you'll read in the report, there's a modicum of service level enhancements, particularly around the areas that are kind of the pain points for the city. Engineers, planners, areas that really the demand is there and we're adding these positions for the city to address that demand. So the CIP for the next five years, each column that you see in the graph before you is a fiscal year. Each color in the graph represents a project type. So obviously, the green represents the sanitary sewer projects, which largely is the clean water program and bringing that to a close over the next couple of years. To further affirm that, I've flipped the data so that each column in this graph is a project type and each color is a fiscal year. The sanitary sewer projects are three times the size of any other project type, just to affirm the magnitude of the clean water program and the importance that it brings to the city. So I'm going to spend the next couple of minutes talking about each project type, major projects that are included in each project type. Our public works director, if you have more technical and detailed questions, is able to address those and giving you more of an overview. So, and all the numbers that you see before you on these slides are the full five-year CIP. So for the bikeway pedestrian projects, over $12 million over five years. This is nearly three times what the city has planned in the previous five-year CIP from 2020 to 2024. The largest project is the 10192 multimodal. That's a class four bike lane. This comes from the city's bike master plan from 2020. On buildings, that is the Bermuda Drive Bridge. It's not seismically sound. It's, you know, over two-thirds of the total budget for bridges for the five-year CIP. Now, what you see on the new Central Park parking garage, Central Park parking garage, there's four major caveats. The first is, we don't have the money to build this. In order to get $18 million, we would have to issue debt. That's the first. The second is that this is a part of the Central Park master plan. It contemplates removal of the current garage, which has the tennis courts above it, relocation of the tennis courts, and building a new parking facility. The third is the state took away local municipalities' ability to charge a parking divot fee that would have offset some of the cost of the construction of this facility. The fourth is that there, because of the garage with the Kikiu crossing, that adds net new parking spaces. That is fairly equivalent to what we would have received in net new from this parking garage. So it's not clear if the demand is there for these additional parking spaces. Miscellaneous, that's projects don't really fit nicely or neatly into other project types. The number one project in this, almost half, is for the King Pool Assessment at over $6 million. Over $26 million over the next five years for parks projects, the largest being Central Park. This is phase one of the completion of phase one of the Central Park master plan. $10 million. I believe the design for the Central Park playground is at or near 100%. So this is bringing it to fruition. Of course, the largest type, of course, being sewer from the clean water program, the wastewater treatment plant, the underground flow equalization system, bringing that to a close over the next couple of years. For stormwater, over $5 million and almost 70% for small trash capture devices. And 100% of the $5 million for streetlights is to complete the high voltage conversion to LED streetlights. On traffic, I have one correction. That should actually be about $1.9 million less. But the number one project is Gramercy Drive retaining wall. And that's the number one project. And the penalty type is utility underground. 100% of that is 25th Avenue. And the last project type, and I did this purposefully, is streets. So $41 million over the five-year period, over 80% for street rehabilitation. When the council met on February 6th, the Public Works Department provided a study session on payment management and funding for streets and the Smooth Streets Program. So the next table that you see should look familiar. It's one of their final slides from that slide deck. And what is included in the CIP? Because the council expressed an interest in looking at the funding for street CIP and whether it wanted greater context for if we were to consider changing the funding for CIP, what other unfunded projects could it consider? But there was no consensus. So in the five-year CIP, the current, the status quo of $8.1 million per year is planned. If we maintain the status quo, the PCI, the Payment Condition Index, will be about 67. If the council wanted to eliminate all failed streets, it would have to increase that to $10.9 million per year, which would get you a PCI of 81. Conversely, if they wanted to decrease the funding down to $3 million per year, that would be about in the high 50s for PCI. So to respond to the council's request to provide context, we asked the Public Works Department and the Parks and Recreation Department to look at our unfunded CIP projects and disposition them to determine what is the priority. And about $100 million of the $234 million of unfunded CIP was either high or medium priority. And what's shown in the child graph on the right is of those projects, how could they be funded, whether restricted or discretionary? Discretionary meaning that these funding sources, like the general fund, like Measure S, could be used for a broad range of uses. Restricted, however, represents things like Measure W, Measure A, gas tax, the road rehabilitation from SB 1. Those can be used for a much narrower range of uses. Of the subset of projects that are priority unfunded, that could be funded by discretionary funding, again, general fund, Measure S, you'll notice kind of a trend that the top six, of the top six, that numbers two through five are drainage or dredging. And Central Park, that represents phases two through four of the Central Park master plan. So phase one, completion of phase one is included in the five-year CIP. Phases two through four is not. So going back to the street CIP, and one thing I want to mention is one of the topics that was discussed during the February meeting was the Smooth Streets Program. And the Smooth Streets Program and elevator pitch is eliminating the failed streets that were identified in 2013, and that's by 2026. So if the council has an interest in changing the funding for streets CIP but wants to honor that commitment to completing the Smooth Streets Program, what we're talking about is the discretionary funding, starting in 2627. So to go back to the priority unfunded, if there's an interest in council, and that's really one of the areas that we're looking for.
I think Councilmember Hedges has a question.
Why go on this? As someone who sent out three mailings, raised $27,000 to do it, all of those mailings were making that very promise. I'm not going to back down on that promise because it would make me a liar because I authored those, number one. Number two, I don't want to take any money off the streets, and I'll tell you why.
Councilmember Hedges, would you mind reserving this time for questions instead of?
No, he was asking what we wanted to do, and I'm telling him.
Oh, are we ready?
If you'll give me maybe like three more minutes, then I'll complete the presentation. So when I get to the end, that'll be one of the questions. The last part. The last part of the presentation is to talk about the 10-year general fund long-term plan. So what you see on the table before you, I've highlighted the net gain and loss. That means the general fund revenues, plus our general fund expenditures, factoring in the department requests, you'll see something that are called net reductions. What that means is, there's an assumption that it's either going to represent additional revenues that are above and beyond what we have anticipated to receive, or alternatively, or a combination thereof, of expenditures that are less than what we expected. I provided an analysis that was included in the AR of looking at general fund revenues, major tax revenues over the last couple of years, and how it substantiates the inclusion of net reductions as a part of the general fund long-term plan. The trend, excuse me, the trend that you're seeing is, yes, for next fiscal year, if all assumptions hold true, that's an $11.5 million loss. However, we are trending by about year seven or eight towards break even. Now, the other part I want to draw your attention to is the ending fund balance. At its lowest, the general fund fund balance gets down to about $76 million relative to our operating budget, that is still a healthy position. The last part I want to show the council is our general fund reserves. Each portion of the bar represents something from our reserves policy. The most important is the 25% operating reserve, that is our bare bones reserve. Above and beyond that is the housing set aside. I mentioned in the report that percent to the housing element, it does contemplate starting to contribute to that housing set aside, again, starting in 2024. That's about $1 million per year. Really, what's happening, because the operating reserve is percentage-based, based on our operating budget, the rainy day reserve, everything that's above and beyond our operating reserve and our housing set aside, is being drawn down. We start at the current fiscal year, we're going to end the year somewhere around $62 million. By 2031, we get down to a low of 16, but by years nine and 10, we do return back to $30 million, which is our target. So what's being asked of council this evening is, first, do you have any feedback on the preview for next fiscal year's budget? The second, to Councilmember Hedges' point, is comments and questions about the, this is a revisit and a response to council's request for greater context for street CIP funding, and is there a, we need to reach a consensus on, do we want to maintain the status quo? We want to increase funding, or we want to decrease funding? So with that, I welcome questions from council.
Okay, so I spent a long time walking through the district over the weekend. I walked five miles on Saturday alone, talking to people. And the issue of streets and street lighting were the two major things that came up with failed streetlights and failed streets. There have been no street improvements on the east side, both the east side of District Two and District Four. And so at this point, the least among us, cutting back on the, financially, cutting back on their infrastructure, I think would be a horrible mistake and a horrible message. And I'm very pushed on this because I had such a large role in passing Measure S and telling people what we were going to do with it, and I would feel very badly and could not agree to cut back. I'd actually like to see more, I'd like to do what we said we'd do and end failed streets by 2026. Would be nice if we actually followed through on it, because how do we convince people to vote again for something we need if we don't follow through on our commitments? Even though it wasn't, it wasn't a system where we were required to spend it, because it would have been harder to pass. We'd have needed two-thirds, but we did make those promises. I see that in the budget, $1.4 million for Noah Folk and 19th or Fashion Island, that's the biggest choke point in the city going east to west. That needs to be worked on. We got almost $6 million for planning and engineering for both 92 and Fashion Island, 19th Avenue. And that should be in the bank, we got $250,000 for Polte. And so pulling away from that would just be a message to the east side that, once again, we're not going to do the work we need to do there. So I just cannot agree to cut back on anything on streets and roads or bike lanes. So I'll just leave it at that for right now.
To the mayor, I have a question about the Central Park Garage project within the priority projects, just because as you mentioned, Finance Director Lee, that if I recall, this project has been delayed and for some of the reasons you mentioned. And I guess, given that, can you maybe speak a little to why it's still like a top priority project in the CIP and still funded? If, yeah.
City Manager Corfitt, would you like to take that question?
Yeah, I think we've, it's funded with an asterisk, because we would have to issue debt to fund it. So there is no funding source at the time. I think, you know, this is my, this is my eighth budget here, and I think every year we've kept that project in the fifth year of the CIP. To keep visibility on it, to keep it as something that we know we may need to do, but it's never been pushed up to years one or two, and we've never actually, in earnest, gone out and actually talked about issuing the debt to build the project. I think, you know, a lot of things have changed over the last eight years. You know, as we did structural improvements to the Central Park Garage to keep it viable, to keep it open through the Central Park Master Plan. As part of the master plan, that garage, the garage as we know it now would go away, and there'd be, and the intent was to have a new garage built. But, you know, as we get to that point, it will be interesting to see if there's actually demand for that garage, and if we will need to make that, you know, do that capital project at the time being. We debated it during the committee meetings, during the CIP committee meetings, as to whether we wanted to keep it on or take it off, you know, because of the uncertainty. We opted to keep it on in the fifth year, just to keep visibility on it and to keep tracking it. But, you know, at this point, it's very uncertain as to whether that project will ever come to fruition.
Thank you. I did have a couple other, hopefully, short questions. I was curious to learn a little more about the piece of the Bike Ped Pie that notes Bike Program San Mateo. And I wonder if Azalea might be able to help clarify, thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers, Azalea Mitch, Public Works Director. You will note that the Bike San Mateo program is programmed to use traffic impact fees. So we will be in the process of updating our traffic impact fees. Currently, they include all the capacity traffic upgrades in the city that have been currently planned. It's not consistent with the proposed update to the general plan, so that's why we're proposing to do that. The TIF does fund a portion of the Bicycle Master Program, the implementation of the BMP, so we have programmed spending around $700,000 a year once the TIF is updated, to be able to use those funds on bicycle projects.
So is that essentially what we're seeing here, is an allocation of traffic impact fees toward the Bicycle Master Plan projects?
Yes, so it, it, it's like 13% of the Bicycle Master Plan proposed projects that we can pay through the TIF. So we had not programmed something like that before, but it is, we decided that it would be a good idea to show that on the five-year CIP.
Thank you. Finance Director Lee, we have, council, despite having a two-year budget process in which one year is focusing more on CIP, will we have a session like this next year as well?
We will, and that's the, we've historically brought a budget preview to the council each April. So the focus for next April's session will be a hard look at our operating budget. The last time we did that was in the heart of COVID. And I'm recalling a conversation with a previous council member, and it was in the context of the council looking at revenue enhancement. And I'm remembering a commitment from staff, because we're asking members of the community to consider a, you know, a tax measure. And the particular council member said, well, that can't be it. There's, you know, that's the revenue side, you know, we should also take a look at the cost to operate. So that was a commitment that staff that I made to the council member to say 100% correct. Where, you know, that's the purpose of year one of the two-year business plan, is to have those hard conversations with each department to really question, do you really need this to provide the service level? So yes, we absolutely will bring a study session like this to council in April.
Thank you, and we had a public comment asking about, or rather, an email that came into council asking about one-page summaries of the project charters. I'm just curious if that's something that could potentially be made available this time around.
So it's a joint exercise between the Finance Department and the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department puts the content into the charters, and the Finance Department puts it cohesively together in the budget document. It's quite a time-consuming process. I'm not certain that we'd be able to have it ready in time for the April study session next year. We typically do provide it during the first public hearing in June. However, if the council's interest is in the content and less the appearance, I can have a conversation with the Public Works Director and the City Manager about making that, moving the timeline up to make that happen.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you for the cooperation, and thank you, Director Lee. I had a couple of questions. Number one, the lights that are in the presentation, those are only the LED projects. That does not include any new lighting.
That's correct.
An area, so that would be something, I don't know how one keeps that in the back of mind or forefront, but that's obviously something we've heard from constituents all over the city as being a real issue.
If, in the previous council, in April of 2022, the council adopted a resolution to commit $10 million of unassigned general fund fund balance. $5.5 billion of that was for capital improvement projects. I believe one of those capital improvement projects was specifically the LED conversion project to prioritize and front-load the funding for it.
Okay, well then, that comes up to comment time. And number two, on your, the pie chart that was talking about the unfunded CIP, that everything was sort of drainage-related, that slide?
Can get that for you.
Lagoon was in it.
Oops, was it this one?
Right.
Okay.
So I'm looking at this and saying, if we are going to do our stormwater drain assessment, and if it passes, then how much of these drainage projects would be covered by that?
Great question, and I'm looking to our Public Works Director to give me an assist.
The stormwater fee effort reflects all of the stormwater CIP identified in the 2004 Storm Drain Master Plan, so all of these projects would be funded. There is a strategy for the Marina Lagoon dredging, which is the largest project. And that 15.7 came from what was proposed in the past. It is potentially an $80 million project, and so there is a strategy to, if revenue were to come in, to then figure out how to kickstart that effort. But all of the drainage projects would be addressed, we would have the revenue to address those.
So then, this pie chart gets a whole lot smaller.
And I just want to be clear, the criteria for inclusion in this chart is priority unfunded. That could be funded by discretionary funding.
Absolutely, absolutely, but I'm just looking at, where are there potentially other sources of revenue that would enable us not to make cuts or to protect programs? And obviously, this would have to pass, so thank you very much. Then, going on to the streets project, the commitment was to fix all failed streets by 2026, but we also will have to continue to maintain streets, yes? And that will continue to cost money, yes? And there hopefully won't be as many failed streets, but things could happen. We could have mega New Year's Eve floods that take out streets. So I guess I am, I am with council, well, that's my question, am I, am I correct in assuming that?
So, I'm sorry, the question?
The question is, we will have to continue to put a substantial amount of money, won't we, in terms of maintaining streets going forward? It's not as if we fix it and it's all done and we can move on.
That's correct.
Right, so, okay. Thank you, those are my questions.
I just have one follow-up, and it's similar to what Deputy Mayor Nash was saying. Did we get any, I'm looking right to Azalea, do we get any update as to how our street conditions fared after all the flooding we had in the first quarter of this year? Meaning, these are obviously based on pre-crazy winter season, and I've been driving on the roads and riding my bike on the roads, and there's a ton more potholes. So do we have an idea of, you know, how much to get to status quo? Is it still going to be 8.1, or is it now 12 or 13% that we, or do you have any idea how much, or how much loss we've had or damage we've had to the roads from this winter season?
So we don't, we take surveys and determine the PCI every other year, but potholes are something that we can do in-house, and typically, they're very localized. So as long as we address the pothole issue and avoid having that issue get worse, we can sustain the PCI until we do the next survey.
Just to clarify, so you believe that with the funding proposed at 8.1, that that will cover getting us to where we're wanting to go?
For the, because we haven't done a reassessment, you know, we've had four months of wet, three months of wet weather. It's done, right, we're done with wet weather.
You say so.
What I'm saying is, we don't have the updated PCI. We know that there are a lot of potholes that we can address, you know, with our crews, so that we can sustain the PCI and sustain this type of funding. We would obviously have to reassess, and the plan would be to update these estimates as we go forward. But we are moving forward with the Smooth Streets Program, will reduce the number of failed streets, and then continue to monitor annually. But the key is the maintenance, as you raised.
Thank you.
I'm making an assumption, you can tell whether it's true or not, when we replace the lighting, that's going to save us money.
That's correct, lower consumption.
And I had a friend on another matter just say to me today about some parking issues. People don't have a parking problem, they have a walking problem. And so from that question, how badly really is for the veterans of downtown merchants is it to do the Central Park Garage? I mean, how badly is it needed?
That's the part that I don't, just clear anything. That's the part that I don't, just clear, and I think Kathy, our Assistant City Manager can provide some index.
So I think just a key consideration to keep in mind is with the current, if we were to implement the current Central Park master plan, it removes that garage altogether that's currently there. So it, that garage is not just, I mean, that garage could be scaled and could be smaller. But if we don't fund a garage there, then there will be no immediate parking for Central Park, other than the street parking surrounding it and the garages nearby. And that is a consideration for the council into the future in terms of like access for, for families to the park, unless we don't move forward with the full implementation of the Central Park master plan.
So, but we're looking at quite a while in the future for that.
Yes, because there's no longer the ability to use parking and lufies.
And are we going to have any chance of getting money for some of the infrastructure that was damaged like our streets from FEMA?
So the, let's start with the, the December and January storms. The first, we did qualify for individual assistance. That means that homeowners are, you know, that meet a certain threshold, are able to get assistance from the federal government. We've later qualified for PA, Public Assistance. I believe our Assistant City Manager has been coordinating with the FEMA agency on what damages there have been to public infrastructure. Now, I don't believe that what was included in there was any damage to any roads or anything of that sort. That's my recollection.
We will primarily be seeing FEMA reimbursement for the labor hours used during the storm, as well as all the tree and debris removal work that was done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich, for a great presentation. Just, you know, just as a point of clarification, we did make an investment in the Central Park parking garage recently to shore it up and make sure it's seismically sound. And so the question about, do we need to add capacity, I think is, is still to be, to be determined. But the immediate, the immediate and urgent structural concerns have been addressed. Is that, is that accurate to say?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you so much. And then I, Rich, do you mind just revisiting that, that slide on the bike ped funding? Because it, it looks like there was. Did I understand Azilia correctly that we have added the TIF into this calculation, that $700,000 annually? Right? And, and that in this five-year period, we are estimating a budget allocation of $12.4 million, which is three times what we had budgeted and spent in the previous five-year cycle?
That's correct. And $700,000 over the latter three years of the five-year CIP. So collectively, $2.1 million of TIF money.
Okay, so, so I think, you know, one of the reasons that we were having this conversation to begin with was a concern for the lack of funding for bike and ped improvements. You know, it's, this is why I think going back and asking for further clarification and having these kind of call-out slides is really important because it shows, you know, cycle over cycle, significant, you know, three times the amount of funding for bike ped in, you know, in this category of spending. So that's, that's really helpful to understand, I think, holistically, as we think about balancing competing needs. And then I remember that council had made a priority of, of a rapid, or seeking funding for a rapid implementation of our high priority bike and pad projects through the bike master plan by 2030. And so I was wondering how that prior, our council priority of finding funding sources is, you know, is then going to be considered in view of this, this pie chart? And, and then how we are going to be seeking any unfunded needs?
So what you see up there are projects that have been programmed. For example, we received grant funding to do the, the 10192 multimodal. We have the Delaware Safe Routes to School, which is also a project that is funded. So those are ongoing projects that we, we, we've been working on. What we will do with the proposed $700,000 in the upcoming years is to look at quick build and rapid implementation. We will also, we're proposing and asking as part of this budget to do the downtown circulation study that will enable, enable us to reassess downtown and bicycle travel through the area as well also, which you will see the next council session, a specific focus on North Central as well. So there, there is a lot of, and then complete streets overall. So there is a bicycle element of this additional use of TIF funding will allow us to then take a, a broader perspective and see where we could do quick build and rapid implementation.
Great. And, and then I know, we can never predict with certainty what kind of state changes will be coming our way in terms of the legislation that changed, that disallowed us from, from charging parking and lufies. But that was, you know, that I think that that is something that might come back and see a correction. And there might be some political will to do that, which, in which case would open up funding options apart from issuing debt. So this is where we open it up for a public comment. And City Clerk, how are we doing on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Lee. We have one in-person speaker, Thomas Morgan. And please raise your hand in the Zoom call if you intend to speak on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. Thomas Morgan, Seminole resident. I am on a committee, but these comments are, as a private citizen. Looking at the VLF issue, I do think this county is a collector of property tax on our behalf, and they get something like a 5% fee. And they seem to get to keep any late payments or charges on, if somebody pays their bill, their property tax bill late. So I'm wondering if there is a way to either make them fund this and then later collect from the state on our behalf, pull together with the other cities to help solve this problem. And the second issue is the CIP and the failed streets. So just this past weekend, I went to my mechanic for a routine tune-up and found out I needed new struts and shocks, and it was like a $2,000 car bill. So it'd be really nice to get those fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, we have two speakers remote. If you are intending to speak, please raise your hand now. Our first speaker remote is Pamela Riddlemeier. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you, City Council members and mayor. I'm Pamela Riddlemeier. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Doral Neighborhood Association. I don't know if you've heard the news yet, but this morning, a student was crossing the street of Barnison Avenue, got hit by a car going to middle school, going to school. This is something that I've been envisioning happening for, for the past year. I, the traffic post-pandemic has increased so much on Barnison. There are very safe, unsafe intersections and the fast, fast traffic is a very well-known problem in the neighborhood. As part of the board of the Neighborhood Association, I've talked to a lot of neighbors and the fast traffic on Barnison and the side streets is a common complaint. Over 1,000 students from around Seminole attend our school. That number might not have been that high years ago. Now it's over 1,000 students, walking, biking, driving to school. There's also a new park and playground on the same block of the middle school, which opened in the fall of last year. So we now have children and families going to the park, and we haven't even seen the maximum number yet because the weather has not been that great. We'll probably see it sometime this spring or summer, how many people actually use that park and playground. So I really urge you to consider implementing more quick build projects and really using some of this money instead of spending all of that money, the eight million a year for the, the paving of the streets. Maybe make a compromise. In some years it'll be eight million, some years less. Three million will get us to still, I think, a reasonable PCI. So if we can make some compromise, maybe the first year, spend less on the street paving, except maybe the emergency projects where the potholes are really bad. And there's been more making our streets safer for those who do, don't drive, for those kids, those, those families that are walking and biking. So I really urge you to maybe think more of a compromise instead of three million versus eight million. Maybe, maybe one year it's more for paving, another year more for, for the streets and, and the biking and the pedestrian and other kinds of green infrastructure and transit projects. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Yiming Lu.
Hello, council members. My name is Yiming, and I'm a high school student. I go to Crystal Springs Upland School in Hillsborough. I'm urging the council to continue funding bike and pedestrian programs in the CIP. I like to school every day from Procy to San Mateo through Fashion Island Boulevard. And these programs are essential to my safety. By continuing to invest in safer infrastructure for cyclists and pedestrians, we protect those in our community who choose not to drive and those who don't have a car. Like Pam said, every dollar that the city puts into these improvements will come back in the form of less smog, less traffic and more business. I urge the council to maintain the current commitments in the CIP towards the bike and pedestrian improvement plans. Thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker.
Thank you. We will close public comment, and this is the time for council to provide some direction. Would you mind bringing up the slide so we? Who would like to start us off?
Okay, Councilmember Lauren.
Thank you. I managed to hit my notes, but I appreciate the presentation tonight. I appreciate learning that in the, in the next three years of, of this CIP cycle, we have an opportunity to get some more funding for projects in our bicycle master plan. In addition to everything else we're, we're looking at, I think, you know, with regard to the, the street CIP funding item, I acknowledge that the, you know, a previous council made it a priority to pursue the Smooth Streets program to restore, reconstruct failed streets and, and bring our streets infrastructure to a better overall quality so that we can maintain them in a way that allowed for good quality for motorists and bicyclists and, and others using the roads, but also to save the city money in maintaining them in the future. I also appreciate that the council this year, through our Blue Sky session, brought forth a priority to be explored in the next fiscal year to see essentially what it would take to complete the high and medium priority projects within the, the whole bike master plan by 2030. And that exploration has yet to begin. So, and yet we are already seeing, as the mayor noted, additional funding that will go to projects, including rapid implementation projects in our plan. So for those reasons, I am comfortable at this time maintaining a 8.1 million per year funding with the understanding that as we continue to review annually operating budget and CIP, when we've completed the Smooth Streets program, for example, after we've had a chance to ask the community what it would like to do with Measure CC funds, after we explore what it would take to really get us to complete all our high and medium priority projects and what funding sources may be available to do that. You know, at that time, there may be an opportunity to revisit this. But for now, I am comfortable with the current amount. And I don't have any further changes to the budget that I would recommend at this time. Thank you.
I really have a lot of faith in you. I think you're one of the best at doing this. And I certainly don't want it to reduce the 8.1 million. I would like to increase it because of the promises we made. And so there's a line from a Robert Service poem that goes, "A promise made is a debt unpaid." And this is a debt unpaid, so I'd like to see it done timely. I would not decrease, decrease, discretionary funding. So 8.1 is my minimum. I would like to increase it. And I think I'm good with everything else.
Thank you to the mayor. Thank you once again, Director Lee, and, and your entire staff and everyone from Public Works that's involved in this, this. I can't begin to imagine what it takes. But it's, it's a great document for us to understand and for the public to understand. And I think one of the things that I'd love to see is trying to figure out other ways that we can share this information more broadly, rather than just at a council meeting. Because people need to understand where their tax dollars are going and what's happening. And the fact is, Mayor Lee said there is so much good news in terms of bike funding. I don't know that that's terribly well-known, so I, I challenge us all to figure out how to get that news out more often. I think it's smart to keep the garage, Central Park Garage, in year five. God knows what's going to happen. But I think it's also a, it's important to keep it top of mind because as Assistant City Manager Kleinbaum said, we need to have parking for people who come to Central Park as we start to really try and open it up. We're going to need to do something. So maybe there's an opportunity and we don't have to go out for the money, but I think it's good to keep it where it is. As Councilmember Hedges said, Smooth Streets is a voter commitment, not just a council decision. And I think it's very important for us to maintain our commitments and be very transparent about them. Maybe in years going forward, we don't need as much money as we need now, but we need to have continued funding sources. So I would absolutely agree to maintain the status quo of 8.1 because it doesn't finish in 2026. But given the fact that, you know, we have an opportunity to do the stormwater fee potentially this year, that could open up all those unfunded drainage projects suddenly will get funded. And then there could easily be, as Councilmember Lorraine said, the opportunity to come back and look at particularly safety projects as Pam Riddlemeier mentioned in her public comment, that that's so critical. And I would, I would actually love to have a study session on all the work that is going on around the city in terms of traffic safety. Because I get so many questions all the time, and I'm sure all my colleagues do, about we need to do this, we need to do that. And we're dealing with it on a one-off basis. So as it's appropriate, I would love to see that on a more consolidated basis. But I am certainly wanting to protect all the projects that are in there. And I think your presentation and the work is, is an example of good budgeting. Yes, we're going down. Yes, we're using money. Yes, there's a deficit. But we're planning several years out, and we plan for this to be a dip, to go back and toward the positive area. And the fact that we're going to have the housing set aside fee and is really important, and we all want to get back to that as quickly as we possibly can. So I am comfortable. I don't have any changes to the proposed budget. But I would say let's keep an eye on those areas where there's opportunity. And please let us know as soon as you do, if there's an opportunity to go back and, and talk about other things. And I would want to maintain the status quo of 8.1. Thank you.
I'm not going to try to repeat everything that's been said, but thank you very much for your presentation and your staff's work. I wouldn't have any changes at this time to the proposed budget, and I would maintain the status quo of 8.1 million. Thank you.
I support my council colleagues, and it sounds like we, we are in consensus on this one issue. And I think it was a very worthwhile exercise to have a broad and more global vantage point to understand the budget. And, and thank you so much for the work that's gone into this. So we will adjourn this meeting, take a break. How much time do you need, City Clerk?
At least good five minutes.
Okay, why don't we give it 10 minutes for a, until we convene for the general meeting. Thank you.